All right. Let's call the Pipestone City Council meeting for June seventeenth to order, please. Could I get a roll call?
Mayor Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Councilmember Colback.
Here.
And Councilmember Thompson is absent tonight. So we have a call.
Thank you. Please rise if you're able to for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda, is there any additions, changes, or deletions of our agenda as it was presented? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and motion carries, thank you. Uh, next up is approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the following items for approval. The June third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes, the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes, the payment of claims, listing of bills, and the May financial reports. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Next up is community concerns. Deb, do we have anyone signed in for community concerns?
We do, Carrie Hineker and Rita Paulson to discuss the city administrator.
Okay, all right. Please come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and uh, speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you. Thank you.
I tried to handle this in a different way, but this is how I have to get my point across to all of you. Good evening, my name is Carrie Hineker and I'm here with concern. Um, I will start at the beginning of our timeline. On June first and second, Michelle Tannick, you will see her on your handout. Uh, Red Cross lifeguard trainer was in town to train the new lifeguards at our pool. She moved a lifeguard chair into a position into the zero depth. Michelle and Deb Nelson told the new guards that they were to report if that chair was moved directly to Deb to bypass both Brooklyn and Robert Peterson. I'm not sure why they thought the chair was going to be moved. Deb and Michelle also repeatedly were badmouthing both Robert and Brooklyn in front of these new guards. On Friday, June seventh, the first Friday the pool is open, at approximately one thirty, Deb entered the Pipestone Aquatic Center and had the lifeguards remove the guests from the pool. Then she then proceeded to scold the lifeguards and manager Brooklyn Hineker for moving this lifeguard chair. Nelson confronted Brooklyn about the chair and Brooklyn informed her that her boss, Robert Peterson instructed that the chair be moved back to its original location. It had been in that spot since the pool opened that day on Monday, on Tuesday. Brooklyn had also placed a lifeguard in the water near where the new chair was to be to cover that area. Nelson then escorted Brooklyn to her vehicle, took her pool keys, and told her to not return until further notice. No verbal warning, no written warning was given to Brooklyn. She was told to leave over a lifeguard chair being moved. Twenty minutes after Brooklyn left, Tannick, the lady, the Red Cross lady, her twin daughters, nineteen-year-old daughters, were at the pool to take over this manager position. These girls live about thirty minutes away in South Dakota. It was obvious that this was Deb's entire plan and it was premeditated. The two girls are now working at the pool in Brooklyn's place. Robert Peterson was out of town when this entire event occurred. After the scene at the pool, when Brooklyn was like, oh, I called Deb Nelson to try to get some answers. She would not get any answers or reasons, seeing her lawyer advised her not to say anything. She did say that lives were in jeopardy because the chair was not in place. It should be noted now that there are seldomly ever guards sitting in this new chair. They are standing in the water where Brooklyn placed them. There are pictures on the back of your paper of the pool. People keep sending you pictures of the chair empty and there is a guard you can see in the water. During our phone call, Deb constantly tried to talk over me and keep me from completing my sentences, bullying. She probably has a recording of our phone calls because that's what she does. Deb makes sure she has witnesses or recordings of conversations. These are not actions of an honest person. Brooklyn has never had a conversation with Deb without Deb bringing a witness. When Brooklyn came in on that following Monday to check the status of her job, she was basically forced to resign because she couldn't get an answer on when she would be allowed to return and decided that the summer job wasn't worth fighting the craziness. Deb also recorded this conversation and had a witness come in. She is consulting a lawyer constantly, which brings up commerce, she's always bringing up, I have, the lawyer has told me not to say this or has advised me, and it just makes you wonder what she's up to. Honest people do not act this way. This is Pipestone, we all live here and are proud of our town. We have ethics, respect, and camaraderie with the members of our community. In regards to the pool, Deb has insinuated herself into a position that did not need her attention. I find it very unusual for a city administrator to take it upon herself to overstep the rec director. I'm sure she never witnessed that kind of thing happening when she was secretary or an assistant to Jeff Jones. This shows lack of respect and there's some infighting occurring in the upper levels of our city government. Michelle Tannick, the Red Cross lady, has engaged towards Brooklands ever since Brooklyn did not step down against from the assistant manager position in Plano after Michelle was fired. Did Michelle place the chair in an odd position to make Brooklyn and Robert question its usefulness and move it? It is also very suspicious how the Tannick girls were ushered into a position so quickly that they aren't qualified for. Brooklyn and Robert's combined experience are more than adequate to determine what needed to be done at the pool and where chairs should be replaced to adequately watch swimmers. Brooklyn did what her boss told her to do. If Deb would have told her to move the chair back, she would have. It should also be noted that Robert is running scared and also has a lawyer. So he would not give us any information or help in finding out what's going on. He's denying ordering the moving chair, or moving the chair back, but I guess you can't blame him. The goal for being here as a member of the community is to open eyes of our mayor and the board to see that nothing is not good for Pipestone. She does not live in Pipestone, she is not a positive role model for our community. She has not conducted herself in a professional manner. She is rude to the people in the community which she is not a part of. I find it interesting how easily people have been coming to me to support bad things about her. I would also beg the board to please review information before her contract comes due. I also ask the board to please protect the others on her chopping list. It seems she's in a firing frenzy and in fear for the other good people that work for our city. To Deb, I would like to say, you lost an exceptional employee, employee running us Brooklyn. She worked from eight AM to seven PM every day. She mowed, pulled weeds, cleansed, taught lessons, protecting the swimmers and guards. She respected her boss, Robert Peterson, and she loves the pool. When workers and guards at the pool said they were gonna quit unless she came back, she told them they needed to keep the pool going for the kids. You didn't even know and you showed her no kindness and respect until her resignation was in your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else for community concerns?
Rita Paulson.
Or Pam?
Oh, sorry, Pam.
Okay.
Sir.
Well, just as a procedural thing, we can't act as a consul on community concerns, but uh, we take this information and investigate further, so, thank you. Okay, next up is legal. Introduction of Ordinance One Fifty-seven, Four Series. This ordinance is an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the establishment, construction, or expansion of renewable energy facilities within the city of Pipestone. And it's being introduced this evening? Is there any questions, or Deb, do you have any further information on this?
Uh, no, Jason had prepared a memorandum to go with that to explain the whole moratorium on that.
Okay. So because we're in the stages of establishing, um, or our intent on the moratorium is to allow the city and its planning commission to study and use the regulations of solar and wind energy facilities in order for the city to make amendments to its current city code. And so this would allow them to investigate further without additional, um, new renewable energies facilities being asked to be constructed. So the ordinance will need to be introduced with the consideration of adoption of the July first council meeting. Jason, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
No, I know, I think, you know, I've laid out the kind of rationale and the facts of the work order. The two more support issues that are discussed. Kind of everything, and it's really, you know, because of the requests that are coming in and really just the interest and demand in requests for renewable electric facilities throughout the state. It really is a need for kind of a vehicle. And what moratorium that is here, more of this and more of starting does essentially give the city kind of time to breathe to study it and to figure out, you know, how they really want to implement these facilities. It doesn't apply to applications that have already gone through the approval process and are already been approved, it doesn't stop those, it just essentially stops new applications for those facilities.
Oh, okay.
Over one year, unless it's terminated earlier, or the ordinance adopted earlier, but it's, it's happened back to one year. So those are the kind of basics of it, and there you said it was the introduction, then we can do the options.
Okay, and that was one of the questions that came up, so I'm glad you answered that. If in fact that their studies are completed, um, that we're able to lift that one-year moratorium earlier if we choose to do so. So I'll introduce this ordinance, uh, One Fifty-seven, Four Series at this time. Next up is engineering, Travis, do you have anything at all on engineering? There's nothing on the agenda, so. Um, our weather hasn't been the best lately for our street project, but I know they're doing the best they can and and uh, will continue to move forward.
Yep, that's, that's about all there is to say.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Old business, the National Park Service Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Program Partnership. A special meeting was held on June thirteenth for the purpose of learning more about the RTCA program. Previously, there were some concerns revolving around whether or not to proceed uh, with the program that would provide free technical service to the city for the purpose of developing a master plan for the area near Hiawatha Pageant Park. Now that more information has been provided, the council can further discuss how they would like to move forward. And so I will open this up for some discussion at this time and uh, possible motions. We put it on the agenda so that we can act on it if we feel fit.
I don't feel the city should get into an agreement with them.
Yeah, I've, from what I've, uh, people I've talked to, they're not really in favor of this agreement with uh, that we need to put the brakes on, not that, not do the project or not develop a master plan, just maybe not use this this uh, firm, or for the
Okay.
For the plan.
And were you able to catch up on the presentation?
Yes, I watched the presentation.
Okay, all right, good, okay. Uh, anything from you, Verdine, on the?
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of uh, using RCT, RTCA to, to get a plan.
Okay, and just for some background on this, um, the reason for the development of the master plan is to move forward with a, we're trying to get a regional park designation um, for the Hiawatha Pageant Park area. And that idea was brought up several years ago, it wasn't something that came from this council. It, it came from the Pageant Park Commission themselves and also the city council from several years ago. And uh, the reason behind it was, was to be able to be eligible for further grant assistance once a regional park is in place. And there was quite a bit of study done, quite a bit of work done on enhancing the trails through that area and to connect the trails with the current trail that system that we have for recreational use. So that was the uh, um, purpose of this whole process. Um, I believe it was in February that the uh, Hiawatha Pageant Park Commission approved a letter to move forward with this project. And so the city council acted based on the information that we had at that time and moved forward with the proposal. Uh, since then, there's been a lot of information out there, some of it is accurate, some of it is inaccurate. And uh, but, it, it's really opened up a can of worms or somebody kicked the bee's nest, that's for sure, because a lot of people are upset and concerned about it. And uh, I think in the long run, um, we would still like to have our park designated as a regional designation park because that's gonna open us up to some possible funding. Nothing is ever guaranteed when you're applying for grants, but it's certainly a, a chance to get some possible funding. And uh, we would have to have a master plan in place to proceed with that. So our options would be to um, hire an entity to move ahead with a master plan. But when someone, when you're hiring someone to do a plan for you, I think it's just a waste of money if you direct them how you want the plan to turn out in the long run. And uh, to me, that would be fruitless. But, again, we, we have to have a master plan. And uh, so, here we are, and I'd, I'd if there's any other further information on this that I'm missing, you know, I, I would hope someone would step up because uh, um, I wanna make sure that everyone is clear on this, and I know that uh, Justin, as our EDA director, has put a lot of effort into this and he started working on it um, a few years ago as a city councilman by the request of the council and the Hiawatha Pageant Park Commission at that time. And uh, so, we are uh, at a point where we can move ahead or we can stop the process in place and uh, go from there. So. I'd entertain a motion.
I would make the motion that we do not enter into an agreement with them for the master plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to not enter into an agreement with uh, the uh, RTC A, in development of a master plan for the Hiawatha Pageant Park. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-one. Two donations were received to assist the city with their Juneteenth event hosted by the Human Rights Commission. Coburn's for twenty-five dollars gift card and the Pipestone County DFL for one hundred dollars. A motion is needed to approve these two donations.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded, is there any discussion? And I know uh, June tenth is coming up here this week, a lot of people have been working on it, it's uh, a holiday now at the state level and we certainly wanna recognize it at the city level too, so. Appreciate the donations from Coburn's and the Pipestone County DFL. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries. Next up is consider the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Crossing Surface Installation Agreement. A request has been made by the Burlington Northern Railroad to partner with them on the cost of the installation of a new railroad crossing on Main Street. BNSF has been planning to upgrade the crossing and with the current city street project going on, BNSF felt that it was a good time to coordinate efforts. BNSF has stated that the crossing was last replaced in two thousand and six and there is a need for the planks underneath to be replaced as they were loose from the continued loading that the crossing sees from traffic vehicles. A temporary fix could be done, however, Burlington Northern Santa Fe feels that the repair would not last long. If the city chose to sign the agreement, the cost share on the project with BNSF, the cost of the city would be eighty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Others who have recently cost shared with the railroad on projects slimmer to this include the city of Dawson, the city of Wilmer, Yellow Medicine County, and La Capparo County. The city's utility commission has been discussing this matter and the agreement has been provided in the council package. So yeah, we had some discussion on it and uh, um, it's gone back and forth. Uh, at first it seemed like it might be a good idea and then it seemed like it might not be a, it wouldn't be a good idea because we're setting a precedent that we haven't done before. And uh, when BNSF says that the, uh, the uh, infrastructure underneath there is loose because of the vehicle traffic, well, I would say their trains had a little bit to do with that, that being worn out too, but uh, that's just me and I'm not an engineer. But anyway, um, it's open for discussion, open for a motion, so. How do you wanna proceed, council, what's your wishes?
Well, as long as we're doing the work on that part of the street, that it probably makes sense to go ahead and and redo that, that crossing at the same time.
If I may, um, I have been, we're talking with Alex and since this is an unbudgeted item, they would be willing to um, invoice the city for this in January of twenty twenty-five. We do have thirty-five thousand dollars in the county state aid fund at this time. We will receive another thirty-five thousand in the state aid fund in January, so that's approximately seventy thousand, and then there is money budgeted in the Mike Street Department that could cover the rest. So we wouldn't have to worry about budgeting and we could proceed with this project.
That would be a good idea.
Yep.
Um, so then it would not affect the assessment to the uh, joining property owners in that area if it's paid for outside of the current project, is that correct?
That is correct.
Because I think it would be very unfair to assess to the people that just happen to live in that area um, for a railroad crossing. And it's unfortunate that this is Burlington Northern's policy, it seems to be a rather new policy. We've never had any uh, funding requests from them for repairs of crossings in the past. And uh, yeah, we've had some crossings that have been pretty rough and in pretty rough shape, but they seem to work well for the railroad, so they have no desire to do anything with them. Um, here we have our main street and this is a area where uh, we are uh, um, redoing things right now and it makes sense to do it right the first time, in my eyes, anyway. So that's, that's my comment.
On Second Street Northeast, now that crossing got repaired, and how, how did that work?
In the, in the past, we had to participate by uh, taking care of the barricading and uh, repairing the surfacing, whatever.
The surface.
On the street.
But the overall cost of it was Burlington Northern?
Correct.
Correct. And then if you look at Hiawatha Avenue on the south end there, they had just redone that within just the last, what, twelve months or so?
Just the last few months and thirteenth, thirteenth street, and all we did was barricades.
And, and there was no request for funding there, so. Uh, why wasn't there, or I guess I'm not trying to spend money that we don't have to, but uh, why is Main Street unique to uh, the rest of the crossings here in, in our city limits? That's what I'm not quite following.
Yes, the only two reasons that BNSF indicated to me that, that there would not be a cost share is if there was an immediate emergency type repair needed or there was other capital replacement work occurring in the area, so I don't know if they had more rail to replace, if that's, if that's their policy that they would incorporate, incorporate it with a bigger project. Um, you say, I, I don't know the circumstances surrounding those other crossings.
Yeah, and I, I see they got some ribbon, some rail out there right now, um, south of town. Uh, so I don't know what their intent is to install that or not. But uh, yeah, when that rail wears out, that's not from the traffic of the vehicles going over it, that's for sure. So, anyway, this is where we're at. And uh, again, what's the wishes of the council here?
I move we uh, go ahead with this project.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to uh, move ahead with the uh, um, cost share with Burlington Northern for eighty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars on the crossing of Main Street.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion, questions, or comments? No, and, and it, it's important again that it's not part of this city of Pipestone's assessment on the street project, so.
Yes.
Totally separate.
And, and using them county state aid funds is adequate for this because that is a county state aid roadway.
Right.
So it'd be a good, good use for them anyway.
And it was, it was nice that they would wait to invoice us till twenty twenty-five, so.
Okay. Why do I feel like I'm getting railroaded? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and motion carries, thank you. Consider cooperative service agreement with the USDA, the APHIS, and WS. This is a cooperative service agreement between the city and the United States Department of Agricultural, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, the Wildlife Services, to conduct a wildlife hazard site visit and provide assistance in developing a wildlife hazard management plan for the Pipestone Municipal Airport. The wildlife hazard visit is required by the FAA for the city's airport master plan. The cost associated with this agreement is five thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, of which is reimbursable through the FAA grant so that the city's share will be five percent or two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-eight cents. And I'd entertain a motion to consider this proposal.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion or concerns? And again, it's one of these things where we're asking for uh, grant money and so we have to follow the uh, rules and regulations of the stipulations behind that, federal and state money, so. Um, yeah, and, and it's gonna be a good thing in the long run. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Next up is closing comments. Do we have any closing comments from any of the council members? I, I did have a couple of dignitaries come to visit me uh, this week and uh, they are sitting in the audience and chose not to come up to the podium and introduce themselves, which is fine. So I have a couple of granddaughters here and uh, um, the youngest one, Mackenzie, who is uh, nine years old, was actually the uh, mayor for a day for the city of Cottage Grove in a program that uh, the city of Cottage Grove has had for quite some time. And what they do, it's a contest uh, with a uh, a written application stating why um, they would make a good mayor for that community. And uh, Mackenzie's uh, letter actually was talking about um, the uh, use of the Spanish language and to make sure that that was part of city government so that all people in the community could be participating in city government and, and also be aware of how the city government was working, is that kinda in a nutshell what you, you had presented? And so she won the contest and uh, it was, seemed like a great program. And it's something that I talked to the uh, school about last uh, fall and uh, we've had some changes there in administration with the school since then, but uh, we wanted to get that program going here in this area too because I, I think it's a good way for uh, young people to get involved with city government and uh, that is so important in today's world that uh, people are aware of how, how things work on the local level, the state level, and the federal level. And it's for the benefit of everyone, so. Great program, thank you girls for coming to see us tonight, appreciate it. Okay, anything else? Hearing none, we'll move into executive closed session and uh, a motion's needed to close the public meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D zero five subdivision three C one to determine the asking price for real property located in section one, township one oh six, range forty-six, Pipestone County, Minnesota, PID one eight point one zero one point zero one zero zero and deter, determine the asking price for real property located at West Lawn Edition Block One Lot Two, PID one eight point eight six zero point. PID 18.860.0020. So I'd entertain a motion to close the public, uh, meeting at this time.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, and motion carries.
Want me to stay or? Yeah.
Yep, on the one piece, yep.